I want to welcome you to tonight's city council meeting for the city of Columbia Heights for Monday, August 26, 2019. And Nicole, could you give us a roll call, please?
Councilmember Biskins here.
Councilmember Williams.
Happy to be here.
Councilmember Mershen.
Here.
Councilmember Nowitzki.
Here.
And Mayor Schmidt.
Here. Thank you. And tonight's invocation is going to be provided by Rachel James from First Lutheran.
Good evening. Let us pray. Dear God, known by many names and above all names, we thank you tonight that we have the opportunity to work together to make this place a better place. We thank you for our elected officials and for our city employees, and especially tonight we give thanks for our new fire chief. We pray for safety upon him and his crew. We thank you, God, for the work that they are doing to help us live in a better place. We pray this week for our teachers and our school staff as they are preparing, for all the families and people in the Columbia Heights who are working toward getting back to school. We pray, God, for safety for our most vulnerable citizens, and we thank you for the work of those who have been elected to lead us. We pray that you would give them wisdom and help them to make choices that benefit all. Amen.
If you are able, please stand and join us for a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item, I'm going to read our mission statement. Our mission is to provide the highest quality public services. Services will be provided in a fair, respectful, and professional manner that effectively address changing citizen and community needs in a fiscally responsible manner. Next item is approval of the agenda. We do have a couple addition amendments to our agenda, under proclamations, presentations, et cetera. Where item B is going to be the library spaghetti dinner, and then C is going to be Big Brothers, Big Sisters, and the Sheridan Story comment. All right. So the first item, can I get a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Biskins, a second by Councilmember Mershen. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. And we have a new fire chief, Charlie Thompson. And Kelly, you were going to introduce us.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Council. I am very, very pleased and excited to introduce new, or as the city attorney just said, recycled, fire chief. So we were lucky enough to get Chief Charlie Thompson back here. He actually served as our fire chief in 1999 to 2005, and with the retirement of Gary Gorman, and we were able to pull him back here to serve as our chief again. I know he's got a great, our crew back there, but also his family here. And I think there's a picture that should be shared, Adam, if you have it.
Do you want me to show you that picture?
Well, the old picture, and then we can do the new one, but...
He hasn't changed much. I knew I'd recognize it.
I know. Yeah.
That would be the picture, Madam Mayor, council members, that you're referring to.
Yes.
That one was taken in 1999, November of 1999, right in front of the station here, in front of our old engine four. It was the entire family. I remember it being a cold afternoon, but things have changed a little bit since 1999, and the group back there came back today, and we took another picture, tried to duplicate it. Stacy's frown wasn't quite as good as it was back then, but it'll work. Madam Mayor, members of the council, city manager, I have to thank you for opening the doors here and allowing me to come back to end my career, because this is where I will end my career, where I began it, as a professional fire chief. I looked around the city, and I could see very clearly that you, as a group of elected officials, are certainly busy here. There's a lot of things that have changed in almost 15 years, and I think that every single one of them are extremely positive. Walking into the new fire station, like I explained to the city manager, coming down Jefferson and hanging a left on 41st was kind of a treat that morning, and ending up in the building you built for them was pretty awesome. Very functional, very professional, and very worthy of the group that stands behind me. So, from this point on, I won't, I won't take much more of your time, and I'll assure you, in a handful of months, you'll see an organization quite different from the one you see today or have seen in the past. I think we're all eager to get to a certain place, and we've all agreed that that's where we're going to go. So with that, again, Madam Mayor, members of the council, I only have one other question for Councilmember Mershen and Councilmember Williams, if I may. Did you miss me?
We heard that's the reason you came back, because you missed us.
Councilmember Mershen, you are correct. You as well, Councilmember Williams.
Thank you. I remember you too.
Not them members.
It's good to them.
Welcome back.
Thank you very much, and I look forward to my tenure here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's amazing to see the whole crew back there and supporting you. That's, that's a testament to your first weekend in your position. Appreciate that. And Dan, you did a great job, and...
I'd hope.
You had to give up the track though, didn't you?
I got a picture of me in the last.
It was good while it lasted. All right. Thank you so much for what you did in the interim. Appreciate that.
No problem.
All right. Next item is the Library Spaghetti Dinner Foundation. Jane Pollard is here to give us some information.
Here is our flyer that you will see around the city, so that many more people can see it in case they miss it. Can you hear me? Or is this, this isn't a problem?
Go ahead.
I'm here, as you've been announced. I'm here on behalf of the Columbia Heights Public Libraries Foundation's annual fundraiser, the spaghetti dinner at Mershen Hall. And it is going to be on Wednesday, September 11th, from 4:30 to 7:00. And Tasty Pizza is once again making the spaghetti and the salad, and we get Culvers, very good. Culvers is more than willing to donate some of their ice cream for us, so it tops off the meal very well. As you know, the foundation raises funds for projects and programs that are not funded by the city. Our fundraiser spaghetti dinner is to assist the library in continuing to serve the city of Columbia Heights with its emphasis on promoting literacy and education. For example, coming up now in September, the foundation, in partnership with ABE, which is the Adult Basic Education School on Central and 41st, they are offering a U.S. citizenship class at the library, where applicants will learn how to become a citizen by learning more about the history of the United States, how to improve their English skills, and so on, whatever it takes to be successful in their citizenship. You have all been given the reminder cards, and we had those made, so they will fit in your wallet or someplace as a reminder, and the date and time is on the back of the card, so you will see that too. We are doing well recruiting volunteers, and two of you have stepped up, so we will have the city council well represented, but we want you to come too, to have a good spaghetti dinner. This year too, or for the second year, we are using the Mershen Hall plates and cups and so on, so that we will reduce our trash output, and we'll have compostables available in the food, too. So we are following the criteria of being a better, more mindful community. So we hope to see you all there, as you all continue to support the library and serve the Columbia Heights citizens. Thank you.
Jane, could you, I'm assuming that you could probably use some more volunteers for the foundation itself? How do you become a foundation member?
You are recruited. You are recruited at the, I would say, suggested that you are faithful to the library services and so on. And so, no, we're doing okay. We have, yeah, there are seven of us there, and so we're doing okay. Kevin, did you have a question?
No, I'm sorry, I scratched my head.
He's volunteering.
We can always use more volunteers serving at the dinner. We're doing okay, but sometimes at the last minute, somebody can't make it who had committed to coming. And we're sorry that there is no longer royalty serving, helping us serve, so we're all stepping up as adult citizens. Does that answer your question?
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is Rachel James is going to come and talk to us about Big Brothers, Big Sisters, and the Sheridan Story.
Thank you. Mayor, members of the council, as you know, school is starting, and there's opportunities for us as citizens of Columbia Heights to be involved. First of all, thank you for, I know that the Columbia Heights Police Department volunteers in the schools in both of these capacities. But, so Big Brothers, Big Sisters has a school-based mentoring. It functions at Highland and at Valley View, and you mentor a student that's placed with you for one hour a week over lunch at the school. And so every year, they're looking for more mentors. There's kind of a waiting list of students. If you are interested, the Big Brothers, Big Sisters website of the Twin Cities has online info sessions you can attend, and all the information and background checks can be done on the Big Brothers, Big Sisters of the Twin Cities website. And we would love for more members of our community to be involved, because these students really thrive. I've done it for three years, and it's just been a wonderful program. Also, our community receives support from the Sheridan Story Organization. It provides bags of food for children that don't have enough to eat over the weekend. I saw on their website today that they are distributing at Highland, at Valley View, and sometimes at the City of Peace Center over on, over on Circle Terrace, that they distribute bags there as well. So what we need for that is another opportunity to volunteer, where you pack the bags into the students' lockers. And to do that, you can sign up on the Sheridan Story website, and both of these organizations are also looking for donations to fund their services. We have about 55 students at Highland who receive the food every week. And so about once a month, I get the opportunity to go on a Friday morning while the kids are in class and tuck the bags into their locker. So if you're looking for a way to volunteer in our schools that is flexible, one Friday a month, Sheridan Story, otherwise every week, the Big Brothers, Big Sisters. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next item is consent agenda, and these items are considered to be routine by the city council, and will be enacted as part of the consent agenda by one motion. Items removed from consent agenda approval will be taken up as a next order of business. I am requesting that item E is removed, so that Kevin can give us an update. It actually covers several items, but we're just going to remove one as a token, and he can talk about anything else he needs to in that regard in the Silver Lake. All right. And then, anybody else have any items they'd like removed? All right. Then minus that one, Kelly, will you go ahead and read them?
Sure. Thank you. Item A is approval of the minutes of the city council meeting of August 12th and the city council work session of August 5th. Item B is accepting the Park and Recreation Committee minutes from April 24th and the library board minutes from July 10th. Item C is approval of a gambling permit and authorization to the city manager to forward a letter to the state for Immaculate Conception Church. Item D is awarding a professional engineering services agreement to Bolton and Mink for the pump station three upgrades. Item E's been pulled. Item F is approval of a professional services agreement with WSB and Associates for consulting services for the Silver Lake lift station reconstruction. Item G is establishing a date for the 2019 Special Assessment Levy Public Hearings for Delinquent Accounts. Can I make a note on that one, Mayor? Do you mind? Because there are no projects this year, this typically is done prior to a regular council meeting. This will be incorporated in the regular council meeting of that evening. Item H is consideration of approval of the attached license, or list of rental housing applications. Item I is approval of the business license agenda for the August 26th meeting as presented in your packet. And item J is a review of the bills totaling $1,677,812.87.
Can I have a motion? So moved to approve minus item E. Okay. Motion by Councilmember Biskins, and second by Councilmember Williams. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you. And item E, Kevin Hansen.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So the work that we have going on at Silver Lake is really kind of a culmination of one thing leads to another. So approximately five years ago, we started talking about the boat landing at Silver Lake and the pond that was there. So it has a water quality pond, and it was really a poor-performing pond, and we received a lot of complaints with that. So we were successful in obtaining some grant money in 2018 for 2019 work, and that work is now really concluded with a brand-new water quality feature down there, which has both a wet pond and a infiltration basin. So that's really going to help clean up the water, the surface water that comes in from Columbia Heights and goes into Silver Lake. That was one of the primary things that we wanted to do down there. During the course of discussions with the city council over the last five years, we also talked about the boat landing. I think for a number of years, probably everybody who's been elected and set up there, but also at Public Works, we've taken complaints on the boat landing that we operate, just in terms of its accessibility. It's difficult to get down there if you're, you know, want to launch a boat or even a canoe or anything with a trailer down there. So we'd also explored some grant funding opportunities for getting the boat landing reconstructed. Well, we found out this year that the boat landing itself did receive funding through the DNR. So that is a project that is actually before you tonight. That's item E, is to go ahead and get that designed and try to get some early bids, some good bids, to get the boat landing itself reconstructed. So when we applied for the grant, one thing that we knew, and that really impacted the accessibility down there, is we do have a sewage lift station right down by the boat landing. And that existence, it has two features on that that stick up out of the ground. One is the can system, and then one is the access vault that's down there. And that kind of impedes or impacts the ability for folks to turn around down there. So that needed to get relocated. It also was on our capital improvement plan for a full replacement in 2021. So one thing leads to another. For the boat landing to happen and be constructed, we need to relocate that lift station. It just so happens, the timing worked out really well, because it needed to get replaced anyways, just due to the age of that structure down there. So that was the item that got approved tonight. So it's one thing leads to another. We have a lot, an awful lot of work going down there, but we were happy in that we were able to get some grant funding for two of the three projects that will be occurring down there in 2020. So one was water quality for the surface water that goes into the lake. That project is now done. And then the other two will enter into design here this fall and early winter, with anticipation of trying to get both of those, the lift station and then also the boat landing itself, built in 2020. And incidentally, we're also meeting with, there is a very active lake association down there. So we'll be meeting with those folks. We have that set up for early September down in that area to meet with them and get input on the boat landing itself. Mayor?
And most of this is happening right now. I noticed there were, both of the ponds that you have built, holding lots of water.
Yes.
And they're doing, that's exactly what they're supposed to be doing? Is that correct?
Right. So there's, there's really two treatment systems there. One is the first pond where the water goes into, and that's the northerly pond, will always be wet. And that is really to remove coarse sediment. So any of the surface water that has any material in it will settle out in that pond. From that pond, it flows into the next pond, and that is an infiltration pond. But that is enhanced. It has iron filings in it, so it helps remove additional phosphorus out of the water column before it goes into Silver Lake. And that was a primary pollutant in Silver Lake. It was phosphorus. When you think about it, it's residential with, you know, grass clippings with fertilizer, that type of thing. So it's, it's not unusual that it is impaired for that. That was our target, is to remove phosphorus out of the water stream.
And then several questions have come up as to when the boat landing is going to be available to the public. Do we have an estimate?
So the boat landing right now, we're looking at paving it either this Friday or next Tuesday, and then we'll open it up right afterwards. Even if we don't get it paved, I think it's in okay shape that we can open it up. And then what we plan on doing is, just due to the construction and the heavy equipment, the access road got fairly tore up. So we're just going to put down a thin lift of asphalt for this fall and next spring, just so it's accessible.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. And then you will have Sunday night notice to the residents as to the meeting in September.
Right. So the meeting in September has been set up, and the association itself is letting people know.
It's already been set up.
Yep. Is set up. And then, you know, we're also looking for, number one, is just design input, so if they have any interest in what we're doing down there. But also, they have particular interest in accessing the lake when they can and can't. So I think that's one thing upfront that we're trying to establish, is that that boat access will be closed because of the work that we're doing. There is no workaround. It's, we're basically tearing up that whole lower area.
And that's for next spring?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Does anybody else have any questions or comments regarding the Silver Lake project? Okay. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Nowitzki, a second by Councilmember Mershen. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Thank you. Moving on to public hearings, we have consideration of revocation of the license to operate a rental unit within the city of Columbia Heights as requested against the rental property at 4321 University Avenue Northeast for failure to meet the requirements of the residential maintenance codes. And Dan O'Brien, you're here to discuss that?
Yes, Madam Mayor, a member of the council. This particular address has three, three outstanding violations, basically the ones that are related to the property maintenance of the property that were not done in, be allotted time, and the reinspection fees that go along with it. So basically that.
Could you, okay. All right. Does anybody have any questions regarding this property? We have, this is a public hearing, and we did have one person that specifically would like to speak regarding this property. Nicole, you want to call them up?
I'm going to have a hard time with this last name, but first name is Joan Polinski.
All right.
I was here in 2016, and talking about the, the maintenance issues at 4321, and nothing from 2016 to 2019 was done at all. Either he doesn't care about any threats from the city of Columbia Heights, it just doesn't seem to bother him. We live right next door to him. 4321 has been used for rental to tenants who use Section 8 vouchers. The outside of the property is not being maintained. The grass is rarely cut in the front yard, and he has kids cutting the grass, so it's so tall, they can only cut a little bit at a time. So I watched them cut the front yard, and they cut, they stopped, but as they were cutting, they were blowing everything in the street. And of course, no one cleaned that. So that's a problem. But this one was interesting. The gutters were so loaded with plants and weeds and what have you, that I was going to call the city, and I was busy and didn't. One day, I was out working in the yard, and there was a man cleaning out the gutters. So he came over, and he said, can I use your hose? And I said, yeah. And I was talking to him, and he was a volunteer from a church in Fridley. So the landlord not only has children cutting his grass, but he has a volunteer that's taking out the weeds and stuff. And the volunteer, good for him, took out the clumps of mud and weeds and threw them in the lawn, and that's where they stayed. So the question is, is the landlord unable financially to take care of that property, or doesn't want to put any money into it? Is he disabled and can't come over and do any work on that property, so he has him a volunteer from the church come and do his work? But anyway, that has to be addressed. The fact that if he doesn't, is not interested in his property financially or physically to make it better, then that alone should be addressed. Now, we got a letter that, we had a tree in the alley that was, branches were going onto the power line, and it hurt both of us, but we cut the tree down, because a tree is going to continue to grow its branches. But when you look at this landlord's property along the alley, his trees are into the power line, nothing's been done. We've cut our tree down. We're a good citizen. This landlord has been let go. So not only does he have trees and stuff in the power line, he has bushes and weeds and what have you all along the line, all along his alley property. Nothing has been done. The cement sidewalk and patio that our good neighbor Ted put in himself is obliterated with weeds. Weeds are growing along the side of the house. Weeds are growing along the trees that should be maybe trimmed. There's weeds everywhere. The outside of the house, this house, is so bad that we're coming to a point, we live right next door, we're coming to a point in our life that we may have to sell our house. Who is going to pay what we think our house might be worth, being next to a property like that? So the outside condition of the house is lowering the value of our house. And I told you about the alley situation. And I had to laugh when I was looking through the 2016 violation things, and one of them was that he was to take down the, remove the broken fence in the rear. The fence is still, or the fence has been fixed, I think by the city. I don't know if it affects that. But anyway, it says repair and replace broken clothesline in rear. That is still there. It's broken, it's rusted, and it's hanging down to the ground. So not even that one little thing did the landlord come and repair. So now, if the outside of the house is never maintained, how about the inside? Does the Housing and Redevelopment Authority go into that house and see what kind of condition it is? And we think there was a scam going. I was going to call the Housing and Redevelopment Authority. The last people that were there were only there a couple days a week, and then they would leave and not come back. Now, if they're having a Section 8 voucher, in all fairness to any family that needs a place to live, nobody should be tolerated to use that property for a scam, or maybe the landlord thought he had something going there. But anyway, one day, we came home, and we notice police cars in front of that property. And two women that had been living there off and on were, I don't know if the word is evicted, were being ushered out. They got in their van. One was crying, one was upset, and they left. And there hasn't been anybody in there since. So why should his rental license be revoked? For all these reasons, and for the fact that we don't even know what the inside of the house looks. Anybody that comes in that house should not be subjected to that mess that's on the outside, or a possible mess that's on the inside. So anyway, that's my story. But I do have one positive thing, and it's directed at Kevin. We live on University Avenue, and of course, we have a lot of plantings there now, and they're really nice. But they were getting overgrown, and everyone knows that when you have plantings, if they're not pruned, if they're not trimmed, they're going to really go out of sight. And I called Kevin one day, and he's got a lot on his plate. And I don't even know if it was two weeks later, I noticed Columbia Heights trucks were there. They trimmed everything, the sidewalk looks, and I have to thank Kevin for doing that, because he's got a lot on his plate. But he listened to a citizen that had a complaint about some plantings being trimmed. Thank you, Kevin, and thank you for listening to me.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Kevin.
Crew did a nice job. I didn't do the work. It's really the crew.
All right. Is there anybody else that would like to speak regarding this property tonight? Is there anybody else? Anybody else? Then can I have a motion to close the public hearing, please?
Moved to close the public hearing and to waive the reading of Resolution Number 2019-69, be an ample copies available to the public.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Biskins, second by Councilmember Williams. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Are there any other comments regarding this property? Did you want to... Did you want to let everybody know that you do go inside?
We do go inside all rental properties every other year, yes.
Okay.
And I will look at, into what went on with the other violations.
Okay. All right. Then can I have a motion to adopt?
Move to adopt Resolution Number twenty nineteen dash sixty-nine, being a resolution of the City Council of the City of Columbia Heights approving revocation pursuant to City Code Chapter five A, Article four, Section five A dot four oh eight A of the rental license listed.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Biskins, second by Councilmember Mersian. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Next item is items for consideration, and we do have an item under New Business and Reports. Conditional reinstatement of rental licenses at forty-two twenty-five Central Avenue Northeast and forty-two twenty-nine Central Avenue Northeast. Dan, you're here to speak on that one, too?
Madam.
Who is?
It is me?
Yep, I'm gonna give an overview.
So the city and the property have come to an agreement that with the issuance of, with your approval, to reissue a conditional rental license to the two properties based on them paying all the outstanding fees, resubmitting their applications as a new rental property would, correcting all the outstanding violations, which I'm told should be done by October first, is an email that I had, so. Based on those things, once all those things are completed, I think I didn't miss anything today, Jim.
What's that?
I didn't miss anything in there?
No, thanks. Pretty straightforward.
Once those items are done, then their licenses will be reinstated and reissued.
So do I understand then that the residents are able to stay there until they get the conditional, if they get the conditional license back?
Yes.
And what happens if they don't meet these requirements for the conditional license?
Then it'll come back to you.
And then we revoke it again?
You do whatever you feel is appropriate at that time.
How many times have we been out there to get this, ask them to get the work done over the last year or two? I mean, the driveway and the parking lot have been a while, have been a problem for quite a while, haven't they?
It sounds like it's probably going on since two thousand sixteen when they first bought the property.
The last three years. I have a real hard time even thinking of voting yes for this because it's three years and they're still not listening to it. And all of a sudden, we're supposed to give them their license back saying they're gonna get the work done in a month? When I know from my own driveway, it takes, I mean, I had to schedule late spring last summer to get my driveway done, and it's now not gonna be done till early spring next year. So, and people who do not take care of their properties and don't have the money to take care of their properties might need to look at a different vocation. It's, three years is a long time to have to deal with this and then to give them their license back. I have a hard time with that.
Councilmember Biskins, I do have a copy of a contract with a company that's going to be doing the repairs.
Okay. That's good to know.
It's one of the requirements usually we have for like an extension.
And they have to go through the five-hour inspection for both properties?
Say that one more time?
When they reapply for their new license, the conditional license, they have to go through reinspection of the inside and the outside, correct?
We don't have to do the whole complete inspection, just that. If they'd like us to, we can certainly do that.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have any comments or questions regarding this?
So with this, if it's reinstated, we would have to go back and revoke it again if that work's not done October first? We couldn't make it be conditional that if we?
Well, it's a conditional license is what we're granting. What does that mean?
Yeah, what's the conditional part?
It just means that, yeah, I mean, every license is conditional in a certain sense because if they don't do what they need to do and what the statute require, or what the ordinance requires, this is moved out of the ordinance and into the litigation, and they still have to meet the ordinance requirements. The litigation has come up with the timeframe, and there's no timeframe defined in our ordinance. This is just what they've come up with to do it. And it'll be held to that timeframe. And if it doesn't get done, it's gonna have to come back to you, and you're gonna have to determine, well, why didn't it get done? What happened? And is there any room for any other option? Or does the license get revoked again at that point in time?
And it wouldn't make more sense just to wait to give the conditional permit back until it's done? Well, I mean, it seems like we're doing quite a bit of work for the same, like what Councilmember Biskins was saying, for the same property over and over.
Well, and I'll step back a little bit. And part of the reason that this property is in the situation that it is is because what the league attorney has referenced is that it's a unique situation, and I agree with that. Because the two properties share this violation, so to speak. And because of the revocations at the same time, that's what triggered the lawsuit because they had no ability, if they lost both license permanently, to license, relicense the properties for five years. And as our attorney from the league indicated, that seems like a harsh circumstance. I understand that we've been frustrated in trying to get them to do the work. But on a normal situation, we would revoke the license. It would be one revocation. They would have the opportunity to get it fixed and then come and reapply, pay the fees just like they're doing. Because of the two properties in one revocation, it really forced their hand to initiate the litigation to try and work this out. And really, the city, in my opinion, I concur with the league attorney, the city really hasn't lost anything in this. We haven't agreed to waive any fees. Finally, what's getting done is getting done, and that's frustrating. I understand that. But if they don't get this done, you know, again, this is part of litigation. And if they don't get this done in October like they say they will, just think how that's gonna look when they go back into court to tell a judge, we still need to have, you've got a side on our favor because they're penalizing us overdoily. And if I'm the judge, let's put ourselves in the judge's position and says, well, wait a minute. You had a settlement, the city agreed to it, and then you couldn't even uphold that. So I just think that it's, yeah, we're waiting a little bit longer. But if this doesn't happen, you won't get this recommendation back in front of you. I can pretty much guarantee that.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have any comments or questions? Bobby or John?
I just, I just think that we'll give them this chance, and if they don't get it done by October, they're done. I'm voting no for letting them have their license back. But as long as they came up with the date and stuff, and they gave this, Dan, the estimate on what it's gonna cost and the date it's gonna get done by, then I feel at least they tried something, you know, trying to get it done right. So I, my feeling is just give them one last chance. That's all I have.
Yeah, I'm looking at the, our attorney's letter, and it's, their recommendation, his recommendation is that we reinstate the license. But it's also subject to code compliance and subject to payment of fees. So everything is dependent on that. And I, we don't want to see people out in the street. That's not our goal. We want to have nice properties, and we want to have compliant properties. So can I get a motion to reinstate, conditional reinstatement?
Move to issue conditional rental housing licenses to Annabelle Pedro Gosa of Walrus Rental Properties LLC to operate the rental properties located at forty-two twenty-five Central Avenue Northeast and forty-two twenty-nine Central Avenue Northeast, Columbia Heights.
Second.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Biskins, a second by Councilmember Williams. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. I just, yeah, I just wanted to clarify that previously, the item we had worked with was, was not the name of the Walrus rental. It was Guardian was the management company. That was the name that was on the previous statement, so.
And Guardian is still the management company for the property. Walrus Rental Properties is the owner, and that's Ms. Peddergirlson.
Would you please turn that off, please? Sorry.
I'm trying, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, sorry.
If you can't, step out, please.
It's shutting off, sorry about that.
All right, that is last item for business under item nine, item ten, report of the City Council. Councilmember Nowinski, you want to start?
This last couple of weeks, I've made it to Cone with a Cop, which was attended very well, yet again, by some of the regulars out there, of course, and then a few new faces. So if you haven't had the chance to get out and meet the officers, it's a great opportunity. That's about it.
I just, I made it to Dari Jones's celebration for him winning the heavyweight belt. I think it was heavyweight, yeah, heavyweight belt. And there's, it was a good turnout, and it was a good time, and I just want to congratulate him as being one of our police officers and working with the kids down in the gym and stuff down below the city hall here, that he's doing a great job. I commend him. Thank you, Dari.
Councilmember Williams?
Nothing to report.
Councilmember Biskins?
Okay, I attended the Metro Housing and Economic Committee. They had a special speaker from the Minnesota Housing Finance. Yep, it's very interesting. She gave us status on what's happening with housing in Minnesota. Two, I attended the landlord meeting that was, where they had the Speaker Sergeant Rick Crayer from Manoka County talk to landlords about the legal methods, the legal means that they can use for eviction, the things to watch out for, the things they can or can't do. It was very interesting. It was very well attended, standing room only. I also helped coordinate and attend the Dog Day afternoon in Pupstrop in Kodiak Park. We had a very good turnout. Lots of puppies showed up. Attended the Afghanistan's Hundred Year Independence Celebration from Britain. One thing I had to mention, I'd never seen really good kite flyers. And there's these three gentlemen that had spools that were this big around. And one of the kites was way across the park, way up in the sky, and you couldn't see it. You could see the line go into the sky, but you couldn't see the kite until a cloud came up behind it, and it was like a dot. It was so cool. Very impressive. I attended the Lions Club picnic and attended the groundbreaking ceremony for our new high school band room, which is very exciting. I also attended the swearing-in ceremony for Officer Bursh, our new officer that we have, and volunteered at Blooming Sunshine Garden in Lomiaki Park. We got lots of mulch laid down last weekend. And I also attended Dari Jones's reception for his winning of the heavyweight belt. It's really great that we have a police officer like Dari in our community that's working with kids, and he's doing really good. Apparently, if I understand, correct me if I'm wrong, he's two steps away from getting into the Olympics. He's got two more competitions.
I don't know.
So that would be, that's, so keep rooting for him, cross your fingers he does well. That'd be so exciting. And that's it. Thank you.
I don't know how he did at his, at the event in Illinois this weekend, but he had one this weekend, too. And as for myself, I did Metro Cities Policy Committee meeting, and then I did League of Minnesota Cities Board meeting. Also, I was at a policy meeting for the league. There we discussed, they were talking about, we had a speaker from Public Health Law Center of Mitchell, Hamlin, and they are available if we are interested in talking about Tobacco Twenty-One. That is, they are not lobbying for either side, so they would probably give us probably the best rounded discussion if we decide to go that route. Also, there is an item that I asked the charter to look at. It's gonna be part of the policy manual. It looks like it probably will pass. It's, it has something to do with the charters and affects only charter communities. So we'll be discussing it possibly at the October meeting if Steve agrees to it, so. I assume.
Steve has agreed.
Oh, okay. I assumed he would, but it would be interesting to hear his opinion. The policies do not get approved until November, so that it would be sufficient time to get it discussed at this level. Thank you, and City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor Council. This evening, the Finance Department presented the two thousand twenty budget message and summary, and that was distributed to the council. Our first general overview will be done by our Finance Director at the September third work session. And then we'll have the more specific department reviews at both the October and November work sessions. Council approval of the preliminary levy will occur. The tentative plan is the first meeting, first regular council meeting in September. That could get bumped to the second meeting depending on how, how the, everything shakes out as far as when we get information from the state. And then the final levy isn't adopted until December. Newsletter's coming out later this week, so everyone can keep their out in the mail for that. We have a new video that's been posted on Facebook, both to the Police Department page as well as the Regular City page. That's a pedestrian safety video, thanks to our own Ben, working with Sergeant Pletcher on that. I also got to attend Dari's reception and give a brief speech on that, which is very exciting, actually very, very fun and exciting. Got to also attend the Dog Day Afternoon event, which was wonderful. And then we have two new police department employees. Nathaniel Bursh is our new police officer. And then Kelvin Ying is our new CSO as well. So if you see them out on the streets or at events, please welcome them to our community, and that's all that I have.
Jim, City Attorney?
Nothing to report, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Next item is community forum. At this time, individuals may address the City Council about any item not included on the regular agenda. Speakers are requested to come to the podium, sign their name and address on the form for this council secretary's record, and limit their comments to five minutes. Individuals are asked to state their name for the record. The City Council will listen to the brief remarks, ask clarifying questions, and if needed, request staff to follow up or direct the matter to be added to an upcoming agenda. Generally, the City Council will not take official action on items raised at the community forum at the meeting in which they are raised. So do we have anybody from the public that would like to speak? Joan? Joanne? Is it Joanne or Joan? Joan, sorry.
Maybe this has been addressed before, but do you have a lot of default on water bills? And the reason I ask, because every time I get the water bill, it's pretty expensive. And you know, we have a lot of financially challenged people in Columbia Heights. And I'm just wondering if, it's kind of old-fashioned to have a water bill sent out every three months rather than like the XL Energy, anybody else sends it out every month. You can have it taken out of your bank account. But we still have that old-fashioned Columbia Heights water bill that you get it every three months. But I question it only for the elderly and the people that can't afford it, that are shocked when they get a, I don't know, hundred, hundred fifty, two hundred dollar water bill. Think about it.
Joan, we actually have Jackie Kirke is here, and she could actually talk to you about that if you have any questions regarding that?
No, it's a general question.
Okay.
Not for me personally, but for people in Columbia Heights that may be questioned. Or maybe there is a default. Nobody knows it. Are there a lot of people defaulting on their water bill?
Do you want to go ahead and speak?
So the city does have a policy where annually we assess delinquent properties or delinquent accounts. So if you haven't paid your water bill, in the past, we had a shut-off notice, and we would shut off water. Well, recently, the City Council decided that we no longer wanted to use that route for collection. And we've always had in place this special assessment. So annually, we assess all delinquent properties, so all of their delinquent bill gets put on their property taxes every year.
Are there a lot of them?
For a community our size, no. It's a small percentage, like three percent of properties within the city, I would say, end up with a delinquent account.
Is it an old-fashioned system to send out a bill every three months versus the XL Energy, send a point each once a month?
For us, for us, it's a cost-saving measure. So we only send postage once a month, or once a, once a quarter for each property. And we have six thousand residents within the city, so it's also easier for us to manage workloads if we have that three thousand bills every month as, or excuse me, two thousand every month as opposed to six thousand at once. And we have other means of payment, so we do have like automatic payment available, so you can have it come directly out of your checking account. And we also have where you can pay your bill online using your credit card. So we've tried to make it a little easier for residents to pay their bills. So we've tried to make it a little easier for residents to pay their bills.
Thank you. It was a good thing you were here tonight.
Yes.
Anybody else from the public? Please come forward and state your name for the record, please.
Hello. My name is Jeffrey Allen Wagner. Just a, a question when it comes to forty-two twenty-nine Central and forty-two twenty-five. Originally started off, the license was pulled, and, um, there's people that moved out because of that. What happened from saying the license is pulled? Last time I was here, so there was a lawsuit, and then all of a sudden, everything's good. They did make repairs prior to you pulling the license, okay? You go around the city of Columbia Heights, there's bigger potholes on the roads, on the businesses. I'm just confused, how can you go from everybody out, people stressed out, to all of a sudden, it's good, uh, far as a lawsuit? And then when the city gets sued, it seems like it went through an insurance company far as attorneys that represent the city. I'm just confused, what was the big difference? Why was it pulled because they did try and make the changes that were requested, and then the city yanked the license? Because there's other people, there was a gentleman on the twenty-second, single-family home of July. He had been there twenty years, and same thing happened to him. Do you have to sue the city? Like, I, I, I don't know, I'm just confused because of all the drama and, you know, just the parent, my parents been going crazy, um, about this, and I, I, I think it's, um, I think it's wrong how it was handled, and you, uh, you know... Please explain to me, because there was, you have bigger potholes on the city streets and in businesses than they did there. Why did it jump to pulling the license so quick? We're not answering questions.
No. Yeah, this, this time, if you have questions like that, it would be great if you could call or stop by and talk to a staff member because they can give you that information.
Okay, so when, um, I was here...
Who would be the most pertinent one to talk to, Kelly, on that one?
Well, Dan or myself. And I, I think we've both talked to Mr. Wagner, and we're happy to do so again.
Okay. All right. And you've got their contact information?
Yeah, so when you come, this is just comments, you can't get any information or ask council anything when you come up here in front of the city council. Is that how this works?
This is time for the residents to make...
The rant? Yeah.
To make comments?
Right.
And we're to listen? And refer it on to staff if necessary.
Very good. Okay. Thanks a lot. The residents, thank you. See you guys. Bye.
Is there anybody else from the public that would like to speak at this time? Anybody else? All right. Then can I get a motion to adjourn, please?
So, second.
Motion by Councilmember Biskins, second by Councilmember Mersham. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We adjourn it.